This is a regular meeting of the planning board of the downtown of Milltown. It shows the old public meetings act and laws of 1975. Public has been notified that the planning board will meet on July 12, 2017 at 6:30 p.m. in town hall. Milltown planning board notified the independent passage of Starlet and the two were retired on November 28, 2016. Notice the meeting was filed to catch the start in person in town on November 28, 2016. All notification of this meeting is given pursuant to the old public meetings act and these 48 hours correct this evening. Roll call.
Mrs. Carroll, Mr. Galloway, Mr. Davis, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Little, Mr. Barry, Mr. Bradton, Mr. Senenah, Mrs. Shilhitz, Mrs. Jones.
Do you raise your flag?
To the right of the United States of America and as a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The administrative matters, payment vouchers, extension of time, 2009 to 12, now LLC, and ordinance review, appointment of independent traffic consultant for Rock Power. New business, 2015 to 2025, and new business, 2017 to 2026.
Your microphone is very soft now. Move it closer.
Every time.
They're in holes. Okay, I need a motion for approval of the minutes of June 7, 217. So moved. In second. Call a favor. Aye. So moved. Any resolutions?
2016, four of one, heard from property of Milltown 2, Mr. O'Nile, permission to subdue him, have a motion please.
So moved.
Mr. Galloway.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bradton.
Yes.
Mr. Senenah.
Yes.
Mrs. Shilhitz.
Yes.
2016, 205, the 935 associates was approved for minor subduing, have a motion please.
So moved. Second.
Need a different second.
Oh, okay. Give us another second.
Second. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Bradton.
Yes.
Mrs. Shilhitz, and Mr. O'Nile.
Yes.
And 2009, not 2010. Maybe that.
Not here. This one's pretty tricky. This is an open end meeting to the polling. Is there anything not on the agenda of the like very force? All right, administrative matters, payment vouchers, Carl.
I reviewed the vouchers for this meeting, today's meeting, July 12, 2017. Total for James Gorman for this period, $10,403.80. Total for Teen and So Associates, $19,130.32. Total for David Holder, $130. Total for planning board, $3,008.74. Total for the total period, $33,538.12. May I have a motion?
Second. Call a favor.
Aye.
So moved. extension time for that review.
If you're currently working on better without the little complexity, the Department Extension Act, Department Extension Act essentially fully approvals ended at the end of June, and you'll be seeing more people requesting extension. They have for two years extension time, but Larry, they won't have one year extension. This is second, one year extension, they have one year.
Did I do the offer in the question last year?
They did.
You did, and one time with the offering extension and the first sort of extension was, uh, was until June of 1917.
But in my opinion, they use it up.
They use it up.
And they do it after the call, they use it up. It got extended to June 30 of this year, one year extension, and also a permanent extension. But they've got two or three sections, one year extension. I don't see any controversy on this issue at all.
So please have a motion, comment, extension time.
Second.
Mr. Galloway.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Bradton.
Yes.
Mr. Senenah.
Yes.
Mrs. Shilhitz.
Yes.
And Mr. O'Nile. Thank you.
Do you ordinance review? Sam?
Uh, looking, uh, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Bradton.
You need to take close to motion.
Uh, in February of this year, we asked you to send a letter to the township council founder to revisit the cluster ordinance of PRD zone ordinance, and, uh, the township committee revised the ordinance and changed it and introduced it that the June meeting with the secondary, uh, and the July 17 meeting, uh, the project, uh, they increased the minimum factor requirement to 35 acres from the existing 5 acres, and it also, uh, the ordinance now requires, uh, they want, uh, they extended the density bonus, and, uh, now the ordinance requires a conforming plan which shows the lock needle for dimension subdivision, and that we, that we have to show a lot of time with the network subdivision, uh, that is compliant with the ordinance, and then, um, provide a cluster option, uh, but they also changed, uh, the open space requirement, where with the new amendment, the ordinance would require at least 30% of the open space to be unconstrained in order to generate usable open space for recreational activity, and it also stipulates that, um, it is restricted to those recreational and construction so the community. So, um, to take into consideration that everyone can use that ordinance to have a cluster development, we have right here, this so-called safe land is unconstrained. The other thing is that this ordinance also needs to be launching what is approved for the discretion of the planning board by specifying that the ordinance shall not construe as the planning plan would upset the PRD in new dimensional subdivision if the board finds that such a development would not be in the best interest of the community. So that's a new addition to the ordinance, and, um, also a blank part of, a blank part of existing development, uh, so that, you know, it just, you know, to ensure that the previous development should have been rendered non-conforming. Now, we did move the master plan, and it's, in fact, in accordance with the legal master plan, it states that cluster development can also be affected when devised properly, that may enable land development, uh, for an amount that will have minimal environmental impact, and minimal utilization of land while preserving open spaces and natural features, and the master plan actually states that, uh, that you can't directly access cluster development, that it needs resources. So, um, definitely consistent with the master plan, and, um, with all the comments, it is a bad for the township committee's drive to the public hearing.
Any more questions, comments on the...
Yeah, I actually have one question. Heard from Reed, he's right with the density. The minimum dwelling units is, it cannot be less than the amount you could have with residential development, yet maximum is also, it can't be more than that amount. So essentially, we'll fix that one number.
Basically, yes, it cannot be fewer than what's allowed by conventional, uh, so for example, by conventional statistics, units, right, um, so it must be, you can't have a four unit, and this is a landmark, but it also ensures that the previous situation did the density for the zone that, for example, here in acquisition for our, it used two dwelling units per acre, it's using the gap. So, so if you have a lot that has, um, that you have, that will, you say eight units, right, your, your, the board has an option to grant, um, a cluster of the PRD type of development, providing to show eight units, um, as...
So it has to be, my question is, am I reading correctly, and that's an area, it has to be eight units, not one more one, not one plus.
That's right, that's right.
And I'm asking, why not have a deal where, like, just thinking back to the Oxley states, if they took a few of those houses out, as just my personal opinion, it might have been more appealing, yet still being...
But, but Oxley was a totally different thing, you know, Oxley, the lot here was six units, and they were providing seventeen, so even if they would have bought five units off, it would have still been far more than what they were doing with it. And the other thing too is, I mean, I, I can't speak on behalf of the developer, but they, if they were to go by, um, to use the cluster development, they would probably want more than that, so...
But it gives some discretion to say, look, if, I, I don't know, I mean, this is something that I just, I just wonder if I'm still describing that.
I think you're right, though, that, the way they were discussing promotions, says the maximum and the minimum for the same amount.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. What was the rationale for going from five acres to 35 acres?
The rationale? The rationale was, um, basically to have lands that are currently, you know, most of the towns developed, but there are certain parcels of land that are, uh, that exceed this particular acreage, that are environmentally sensitive areas, and they, they would have an option to use, uh, this, they would have an option to use this mechanism, that was the rationale for it, to go to 35% of the cost, to this five acres. With the previous situation, any, any parcel we could, you know, that the property we had, there were, it was like eleven acres, and they came for cluster development. Um, with this one, how also, they can use for cluster development, but if it also get adequate amount of open space, they should use what you have to do, you know, I'm saying an example, I'm not saying that that's any application of, of the board, but that would give, they just have an option to put in usable recreational space.
I guess for practical purposes, how many locations in the calendar, I mean, in the calendar certified acres would just apply to?
I think five, six, I think on top of the list. But, you know, you understand, this is, this is conditionally used, so it's not that everybody will want to use it. I mean, we've had this ordinance for a period of years, and really, we did not have that many applications, you know?
I know, I think for practical purposes, this meant it takes cluster development off for danger, because there are very few spots where you can really do it now. I think that would leave a negative effect on it.
Well, I just, the role of planning board, though, is to determine whether this ordinance is substantially consistent with that. It's hard not to make comments on the wording of, the wisdom of, the words, but that's really a tangent that maybe you want to, you know? The role of the planning board is somewhat of it, it's really just a finding of whether it's substantially consistent with that law.
Yes, I...
You can certainly make other recommendations, but the statutory role is to determine whether it's substantially consistent.
I agree with that, thank you, Mr. Carroll. The master planning encourages cluster development, that this plan goes against the, the way it's written now, and it takes out the bonuses, the, actually, the master planning encourages the bonuses, so, uh, and it also puts a, a, I guess you'd call it a constraint on developers, where they may satisfy all the conditions of the ordinance, but then it's left to the subjective view of the planning board as to whether or not they approve it, so they can spend a lot of time and effort putting their posts together, probably going across the, crossing over the T's, but then, it ends up being a little random.
I would, I would call it a whim, I would call it a form of discretion, though, but you're right, there's a subjective nature to the condition.
And we try to, we try to tighten up a little bit more, and add to substantially more, to be able to the discretion of the planning board, you know, and we try to tighten it up a little bit, keeping, taking into consideration that after all, the township and its land's properties are needed, are the rule in the nature, so, uh, that's, that's what we do, and as Mr. Gordon said, we just have to see the consistency of this.
Well, I agree, I think that's, that's all we do, and whether or not we think it satisfies the master plan, in terms of committing this, what people do, I think, maybe the bigger issue is whether or not we should modify the master plan to, to, but that's outside.
All right, if, if the board were to find that it was not substantially consistent, the government body could still adopt the ordinance, but they need a system of voting votes, and they have to state the reasons why, so, with that limitation, it doesn't imply that you can attend, it just requires, uh, a court, kind of five votes from the committee, and a staple of the reasons why.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that I, I think we've been discussing this, this changes, or asking to have them addressed for, you know, some time now, for four or five months, and I think this is a, a good cleanup of the ordinance, a good alteration, consistent with the master plan, and, uh, to Mr. Davis's point about taking it out of the hands of the, the developers, this is, doesn't affect any, any existing, uh, plans already, and it was always up to, the board always had discretion to, uh, apply it, so, um, I, I do think we should, we should approve this, this our, this our...
Well, I think there's one planning aspect of this that gets overlooked, where, I ain't heard of the cluster zoning, or, I'm sorry, is that what you, like?
Land, just...
Land, right, the PRD incentivizes, say you have a tract of land that started with trees, and rather than having someone cut all the trees down, and, you know, have full-size lots, you preserve some of the forest, and you have closer to government assets, there's really no incentive to do that within here, if, to bring the, the PR, the PRD, you're, you're hiring many people, planners, and grant application, that you really have, it's still up to the board's discretion, so, I think, I think it essentially kills, kills the ordinance. I think there should be some kind of incentive for achieving a planning.
I'm not sure, the council committee, we're not here to decide what these, what is, we're here to discuss whether that is consistently consistent.
Yes, that does, or only part of the responsibility as a planning.
But does this conform to the master plan, the most recent master plan? Yes, right now. We can provide our comments, let it to, back to the council committee, uh, but we're not here to discuss anything, anything like that, to decide whether that is consistent, and if we believe it's not, how is it?
Well, it's not consistent, it doesn't encourage preservation of natural features, well.
It actually does.
I mean, it does, it increases it from five acres to 35 acres, so if you have a five-acre property, you are, you can use this, I'm sorry, if you, if you, we're increasing the acreage so that we do preserve it, that is, that is the point, and if we increase it, the threshold to be able to use this ordinance is greater, so we are preserving the natural beauty of Milltown, that, that's the point of, of increasing the threshold. But what I mean is, there's no incentive, there's less of incentive to actually utilize this ordinance, which in itself is meant to advance the master plan.
The incentive generally is that they have far fewer costs for infrastructure, you know, they're trying to minimize the roofs, sewer runs, water runs, facility runs, in general, less creating, that's why a developer would pick that option, or they'd be, in general, that's why, so there is some cost savings, if, if the developer chooses to go this route, then assuming that he goes, it would be just a cost improvement.
And again, our role as board is solely to determine whether or not the proposed ordinance is consistent with the master plan as it is now, if that's what it is, I'll make a motion that we, the board, at that point, that it is in fact consistent.
Second. All right, so the two aldermen is on this one, I'm going to vote.
Before I take the vote, I just wanted to mention that Mrs. Carroll will arrive at 6:40, and Mr. Hyatt will arrive at 6:35. Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Bradton?
Yes.
Mr. Senenah?
Yes.
Mrs. Shilhitz?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Nile.
Yes.
Okay, now, the administrative matters, you want to defend the graphic assault?
We were not required to do a panel, but nevertheless, we went ahead and did that and conceived the proposals, and all three proposals are competence, we've read and reviewed in our capable form, we went and reviewed it in further detail, and, uh, it's my, it's my recommendation that Stan, that, uh, is, meets and goes beyond what, what we're required, we are, we have done numerous, several, um, such projects, the latest, the closest one was, is I think we're currently working on exit 101, and they, it's, they're fresh, they're, they're not done more in the other town per se, so it's an independent third, uh, party, um, way of looking at this project, and, um, another case that I really liked about this proposal was that we gave a detailed description, as compared to the other two, the, the other two was just some of the qualifications, this gave a detailed description, and, um, so I, I would make a recognition, and it's, I'll finally, the decision is to go, but, um, recognition was...
So, a question answered, pertaining to the area that they will actually do the traffic study, is it going to be wider than what village, there are jobs, shops, or locations?
We, well, we couldn't, we cannot go beyond the scope of this application, but we still, um, recommended, um, recommended Kaysman, recommended that Kaysman intersection would be implied, um, then his highway and Tinder, so four intersections.
Having reviewed the, the three different applications, I agree with, with Sam's conclusion, uh, clearly in front of everybody else.
Can you motion, if there's a motion to hire one of the three firms, is this all right table?
Is I making a motion that, that I stand there?
No, you know what, I'm sorry, because we have all 11 members here, the two aldermen stand, can't vote unless there's somebody who's conflicted, for some of the reason why one of the regular members can't vote, so on this matter here, presuming all the nine regular members can vote, then it has to be a motion to second, but I won't bet.
Just making a motion not to use San代as our traffic study firm.
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Hyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Bradton?
Yes.
Mr. Senenah?
Yes.
Mrs. Shilhitz?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Nile.
Yes.
Okay, this raises to hold business, almost 35. Uh, just for everybody's education, we have two applications here this evening, uh, Mr. Polycastro, we have two hours, 9:00 o'clock, then I can bring the next one on, uh, sorry, 9:00 o'clock.
Again, for the record, Mark Polycastro is attending the application. We have provided the notice, Mr. Chairman.
By review, that Mr. Polycastro, it's in order, they called it, put it into her time, and the spur vendor, and sent out, and sent out the notice. If I might, this is a continuing public hearing in February of 15, 2017, that's the only hearing on this matter, get everything else before that application's sorted in February, is continuation that may be redone for this being...
In terms of exhibits, crap if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Nile, we have one exhibit from last...
That's one.
A1, which is a pack of six sheets.
So if we're an exhibit, that would be eight, too.
We'll be answering several exhibits this evening. I'd like to recall Mr. Fidamont, our engineer.
Sir, my, my folks, hello.
Sir, the sir.
Chairman, I'm support, I'm on...
Speak up.
Do you have a microphone, please?
Yep. Here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ron Gazroski, an attorney with offices in 5 Ford, Road Street, Red Bank, New Jersey. I earlier appealed before the board concerning this application, represented to the board that I represent a citizens group known as 90 Milltown LLC, I think we provided that information to the board. Before we begin, I do want to raise a procedural issue, which I was, I didn't discuss it, Mr. Gordon, but I told him that before the meeting began, I wanted the opportunity to replace my position on the record in regards to the proceeding for, uh, this evening. If I may, I'll begin now. Position of the objector in this case is that with regard to the hearing, which is on for this evening, this board at this juncture does not have jurisdiction to hear this application, and my reasons for saying that are, are either brief, and I will be brief. I've examined several documents relative to the initial application, as well as the general development plan, which I believe passed in July of the year 2016. I also reviewed earlier emails going back and forth between Mr. Gordon, as well as with Mr. Polycastro. First of all, what is absolutely clear is that when, in fact, this general development plan was passed, and there was a clear representation by the applicant at that time, that there would not be a use on these premises greater than 45,000 square feet. That representation was reflected in the resolution, commented upon by Mr. Gordon, and there was a specific representation concerning that. Uh, this is really, when that was passed, this just simply wasn't an application that was made by the applicant, the board listened to it, and came up with a figure, uh, $45,000. I've traced some of the emails concerning this, and one thing is absolutely clear, is that for a period of several months, there was a give and take between the board and Mr. Polycastro with regard to this, which ultimately culminated in a vote being taken, predicated upon the representation of Mr. Arico. Seemingly, here for that, there was some buyer's remorse, and you... Seemingly, prior to that, there was some buyer's remorse, and the attorney for the applicant attempted to negotiate some type of agreement with the board that would be kind of like an alleviation of that particular requirement, so that in fact, the general development plan would be increased. There were figures in the numbers, eighty, eighty thousand square feet, one hundred thousand square feet. And right around June the first or so, June the third, there was some heated, not heated, but flurry of emails between Mr. Polycastro and Mr. Gordon. And my position is basically this, when that resolution for the general development plan was passed, it wasn't just a resolution of the planning board, but it was really a settlement between the planning board, the applicant, and the public. Public attended all of those hearings, the public spoke out publicly, the public relied upon the representation of Mr. Orico, and did not challenge the general development plan. As a matter of fact, the applicant did not challenge the general development plan, and they accepted a figure of forty-five thousand square feet. Now, before that occurred, and I'd like to read into the record, because I think we are on the record, there were emails exchanged between Mr. Gordon and Mr. Polycastro, where Mr. Polycastro was, was basically, and that took Fulton for that, representing the client. And despite the fact that the resolution had already taken place, but had not been memorialized, he wanted to massage that approval. And I think what is interesting is that we, of course, now have the applicant coming before this board, seeking relief, because he now claims, claims, he now represents to the board that he has an end user for this proposed space, where previously we would have the pet store, the supermarket, and the package store. Rather than having those three uses, all of which are less than forty-five thousand square feet, he wants to utilize that entire space for a Wengman supermarket encompassing eventually one hundred and thirty thousand square feet. But I would represent to you, it seems to me this is really not a surprise, because in an email, which was sent by Mr. Polycastro to Mr. Gordon on June the third, after which the Gordon had said to him, the board will do what they think is best, in an email of June the third, right now, that could be a forty-five thousand dollar max based upon your guys' representation. This is an important issue. That will be up to the board to decide. Mr. Polycastro writes back, "We did not represent any maximum. The GDP does not excite plan when we agreed to no maximum. It was informational, based on our best information, and we definitely spoke about Wengmans, and as you know, Wengmans are not forty-five thousand square feet. When we have a discussion on the board level, if we cannot agree to something reasonable between nine and five thirty, we are looking to be reasonable, and we are hopeful that the board will as well, perhaps eighty thousand square feet, require a site plan approval, I would look that way." Now, there's other emails which go back and forth in regards to the same thing, but the key thing is that back in two thousand and fifteen, the applicant clearly was aware of the fact he might possibly lease that space to an end user, which clearly had a great deed for forty-five thousand square feet. So we also look at the GDP, and I think I went through some cross-examination of Mr. Orico the next time I was here, and I don't think it's completely necessary to do it again. But the important thing that Mr. Orico was saying, I'm sorry, you go. Mr. Orico, because with a name like mine, it should be very careful to pronounce it. Mr. Orico, and if you're supposed to, I apologize, I'm a rookie. Mr. Orico says, "What we're looking at here is, if the concern is, are we going to do a Super Walmart? So, no, we're not doing Super Walmart. Yes, I do have a Super Walmart in my portfolio, that's not what this site, not what this site should be. Will that be boxes that may be forty-five thousand square feet? Yes, but there's only going to be one in two, because the site isn't really developed for that. This is a, this is eighty feet deep, this is only a hundred feet deep, so my only opportunity is here, and we're talking to two different cylinders." Perhaps, clearly, in that exchange, which took place during the general development plan, Mr. Orico represented to the board what he's going to do, and said that basically this site, because of the size, the dimensions, and the like, would not lend itself to restore the size of a Super Walmart. Well, Super Walmarts, they go from anywhere from a hundred thousand square feet off to a hundred and forty thousand square feet. This is a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. This store will have the same traffic pattern and demands as a, a Super Walmart, using marketing the same clock. Now, I understand the argument, which was put forth by my friend, Mr. Polycastro, talking about the site, and my opinion, on the speed, the applicant in this particular case cannot alter both ways. If he wants to rely upon the general development plan, for which he has some approval of, then fine, then he's got to live by the terms of the general development plan. If he wants to alter that, he's got to come back before this board, and I, I question whether this board alone can make that decision, because this was a settlement. The public has a right to participate in this.
There was no settlement. I don't know what, I'm sorry, I'm just going to whack. There was, so there was a GDP approval, it's a resolution, so there was no settlement, and we're seeking relief from a condition of the GDP approval, along with subdivision, site plan approval, and these are nothing against it. We've noticed from that, it's very clear, we submitted a letter, a June twenty-second letter to the board, which I know you've copied, and we stand by that letter, it's been long on, and this board is encouraged to give our location. So I just want to know if they can, if they'll add to that.
Please, Mr. Gavert.
What is your ask? Is your ask that the board can tell you if we should go home? Because we're, we're here, let the procedure.
If the chairman wishes to vote that question to me, I'll be happy to respond with, I don't have to respond. What's the procedural issue you want the board?
I think the procedural issue I want to decide is whether or not, number one, this board has the jurisdiction to alter the terms of the general development plan without having a full hearing to show. And I think the only reason or how we could change that general development plan is either through proceeding before a superior court, or in the alternative, having a specific hearing, wherein the applicant lays out to this board, any change of circumstances, which might alter the reason why this board only granted an approval in its general development plan for forty-five thousand square feet. I mean, the alternative would be, would be for the, for either the applicant or the board to void the general development plan. And the applicant can then come in with a application, either for number one, simply the commercial site, or number two, the commercial site, plus the residential site. And I agree with him. If he does that, then of course he is governed by the regulations set forth in the ordinance that are to the beginning of, which is what he's, what he's really looking to do is have this both ways. He's looking to have the conception of the general development plan. He's coming forth with only one application, and that application being the commercial site. And if you lead the general development plan revolution, the only applicant in that particular application was National Reel. So if we're going to proceed forward and seek to leave with regard to that forty-five thousand square feet, quite frankly, if he comes back before this board with a site plan just for the commercial site, I would acknowledge the fact that he's not buying by the forty-five thousand square feet, because he's not getting the benefit of the general development plan. But in addition to that, you, and I've read all of the parts on this, obviously, and I've read the comments of Chairman Rogen regarding this matter being very, very confidently, and both the residential and the commercial here really are like interlocking pieces of a puzzle. And I know the decisions made, but I believe that the new general development plan, it was intended by the board, and even I was heard to get. Now, if that's not being, which isn't being here, number one, we don't even know, there's not even an application pending by Toll Brothers at this particular time. We don't know whether this residential site will ever be built. But in addition to that, if you look at this application, number one, the interconnecting road for this project is supposed to be on Toll Brothers site, it's going to be on Toll Brothers site, and it's being built by the South, sending it to regards to some of the basements. So, once again, also, if you look at the title, which is coming from the board, if you look at the notice of the Coca-Cola.
For this night? For tonight? For tonight, yeah.
In the first paragraph, it says, here, "To consider an application for one hundred and five, self-division at one hundred and five, major site plan through a lot of consolidation, design way for relief, all." And then it says, "A limited amendment to or relief from the GDP resolution." Now, how does that give notice to the public, what this hearing is all about? Now, they get a little bit more explicit later on in that notice, and I'll read that to you as well.
Four pages, is sufficient, I think.
Four, four pages. My microphone, my microphone.
Within this, it's all on books. Within the notice, it says, approximately with thirty, thirty-six thousand square foot. So, I mean, I, I mean, they could go on, I guess you could make a big thing, so you could do whatever. But in this notice, it talks about the relief they're seeking, and they're clearly, as we both agree, they're seeking an amendment to the GDP. The issue becomes, what's the process? What's the jurisdiction? And the jurisdiction why should we apply it? I mean, there's no question about that. There's no question that they're allowed to ask for an amendment from the GDP, and it just really, when does the board make that decision? They wrote, Mr. Polycastro wrote an extensive memorandum on June twenty-two, which he passed, that went through the law, and clearly, there's not a lot on this particular issue. There may be nothing. They drew analysis on different bases in different sections. And I agree with the general conclusions. The board has to make a decision as to whether or not that condition is going to be waived. It's my recommendation that that decision be made at the, as part of, at the end of this application, because otherwise, you're making a decision in a vacuum. You don't know what it looks like, you don't know where it is, you don't know how the store is going to function, you don't know how much parking is required, and they're asking for a limited amendment to the GDP for Wengmans. That has to be, in my opinion, developed with the context, and just like any other application before the board, you don't make a decision on each variance upfront, you make a decision on everything at the end. If you started doing these bill, you're going to wind up going to court, whatever decision you make, you say, you know what, we're not going to waive three thousand square feet, then the applicant's decision. If you say, we are going to do it, we didn't go to a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, then the objector's decision. And we're going to wind up on the D four, going to court for six months, a year, whatever they need, on an issue that quite frankly, in my opinion, will want at the end of the process, it still may go to court, but when it goes to court, the court's going to be able to judge the entire decision on the entire application that the board made, and not do it in a peaceful fashion. So, and that's expressed in the, Mr. Polycastro's memorandum of June twenty-two. I think, you know, I generally agree with that, and I think I just said that, and that would be my suggestion. The board wants to do something different, that's okay too, for in the somewhat uncharted orders, there's no case for statute directly informed through, we're drawing upon our best professional opinion, looking at what's available out here. I understand that they keep going a different way, and I understand, because we're asking you, we're asking the board to make that decision upfront before anything else happens.
No, I, I would have to say that I agree with most of the comments, okay? But Mr. Gordon, respectfully, you say you don't want to do this on a peaceful basis. Well, by separating these two applications, you are doing a peaceful basis, but that's...
But that's not in the board's control, because we can't make Toll Brothers apply. Well, I think the board forcefully said, if you're going to have two applications pending, you do them together. But if they want to do one after the other, which I guess is about, they've chosen to take, then that's supposed to be before the board. And we can't, we can't make Toll Brothers apply.
I understand, I think, my position, my position is that you're going to do a peaceful thing, and we cannot do it to the benefit of the general development. And we got into the site, we're going to adjust the commercial. But let me finish, I'm, I'm almost, okay? I mean, I, I disagree with that. I understand, you know, four pages have been shared, but Mr. Polycastro can begin this case. But they do go on in greater detail later in the notice, and it says, "With respect to the grocery building," and grocery building, of course, at the time of the GDP, was forty-four thousand square feet. "The applicant seeks a limited amendment or relief from the GDP resolution." How? Limited to the grocery building only, to permit this annual store to be forty-hundred excess of forty-five thousand square feet. There's nothing in that statement saying, we want to go from forty-five thousand square feet to a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. There's nothing in that notice that says, there's been a change of some dress, Democrats, change, whatever, also using a people proceeding. There's none of that, so I can respect the, that, as you mentioned earlier, that this notice on hearing is, is, is false.
We don't have to give the reasons to give this classification.
And you know what? I guess both of you can preserve your arguments. I'm not the person for a judge at some later date. I reviewed the notice, it's not as thorough as it can be under the circumstances. Is it perfect? Probably not. But nothing's perfect. So, could they have mentioned it again, where they said forty-five thousand, and then also repeated a hundred and thirty? I guess they could. But they mentioned it about five thousand plus above, there's a hundred and thirty thousand square feet, so, you know, whatever. I think the board's sufficient, I think the notice is sufficient to give the public an idea of what's going on. Certainly, I think everyone here, public, community, newspaper, etc., people know that you're not proposing a Wengman space. I go back one time, the GDP clearly provides, clearly complements separate application for, potential for certain application for the residential and the commercial, I don't see. I disagree with some, well, again, that's my interpretation, I agree with it. So, in my interpretation, what I agree with probably clearly, but it's been a long time ago, so who knows? But I, I, I have to say, I agree with...
Then you should step down.
Okay. We'll talk about future approvals, and if those talk about who goes first and things like that. Again, if that's an issue that you want to judge and decide, you don't want it. Please. It's not open, I respect, I appreciate the side of the board, this is me, I post my position on the record, but obviously, for a one-year requirement, including this, is that as this hearing goes forward, hopefully, undoubtedly so, the board will listen to the comments on pages, or the direction, it will be important to be drawn to the applicant to choose space, as well as establishing progress.
Mr. Gazeroski, please believe that we will have a plethora of questions for you and the applicant as this goes on. I think everyone here on the board has a lot of questions, and it will be brought out in the open, once we find out what their, what their procedures will be.
I would like, just to make sure, that Mr. Gazeroski did send a letter of March sixth, two thousand and seventeen, because in the last hearing, we asked Mr. Gazeroski as to who he represents. So, these people were represented as part of mining development, on demanding Ole Dicenzo, Philistromich, Williams, Quarrel Thomas, Daniel Fiderella. So, those people are represented through the council. If they, they, that means they can't ask questions directly of a witness, they have to go through their attorney, they still can make comments at the end, but Mr. Gazeroski can just shake them up, and they can certainly, they're not, they're not losing the right to make any statements they want at the end. But they don't have the right to separately ask questions from you. Those are the five people.
How does this accurate, how does this accurate specific statement?
What, it's been, so it's March, all these, is it accurate for the last, is it a chance? Well, I, I left the mic, I was, I was sitting down in March. I forgot just one question, I listened to the... I listened to, before we began this meeting, the board retaining the services with Traffic Consulting to review various intersections and the like. I think that after that report is completed, and presumably, it'll be completed tomorrow to the next meeting, if it's necessary, posing questions to witnesses on the applicant who pulled before that was proposed. pulled before that was proposed, that it would be called back to be Traffic Consultant. I'm sure the board may have questions, Mr. Corbin.
I don't know what the timing is, but certainly, the Traffic Consultant retained tonight by the board is hoping for this. The board anticipates a prompt review and a prompt report. Logistically, how that's all going to fit in, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it would make some sense that before the applicant started to do his traffic testimony, that the traffic engineer hired by the municipal through that RFP, or just noting, that that traffic report would be done, consultant would be present at the meeting to listen to the testimony live. That would be the intention. I don't think that Mr. Poligastro is intending to put on traffic testimony tonight.
That's right.
So, I guess we'll have to deal with the logistics as the board continues with the hearing.
Why should we ask people, Ron? Makes complete sense, and that's what we've already anticipated happening.
I assumed that to be so, just one of the... My understanding of this meeting with Mr. Poligastro today, it tends to reform...
Ron, there's no way to pack the people back there this year, because I can barely...
If I understand, if I understand this evening, we're going to get through Mr. Poligastro's engineer, hopefully, and I think, I'm assuming, my understanding from Mr. Corbin.
That's right.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Maybe use the engineer.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fidemont?
Mr. Fidemont's under oath from February, he was in the middle of, or in his direct testimony in Hackneyton. There was no cross-examination in there.
Square him, or you want to re-square him, it's okay.
I'm hearing him. Okay, you've been recorded.
So, at the last hearing in February, you completed your direct testimony on Saturday, is that correct?
Yes.
In SIS that hearing, you submitted revised subdivision plans to the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Dated, I believe, June 5, 2017, is that correct?
Yes.
You have an exhibit you'd like to mark? You do that, we'll bring the title to the record on the revision date.
I think you have a little bit of a...
Correct. Okay, A2 is primary and final major subdivision plan sheet three of four, and last revised June 5, 2017. This will be A2. A3 is the primary and final major subdivision plan, last revised June 5, 2017, signed by Joseph Ramona.
Right.
And that sheet which...
Right.
That is sheet four of four of the subdivision. And this is simply a colored rendition of the plan that's on file with town, and I'll ask this couple of exhibit around the boards. Can I have a copy, please?
Can I have any, you need one, Ron? And so, to be clear, this is, you have these sheets somewhere in your bag, you have the subdivision plans?
Yes.
These are colored?
Yes. Right. So, referring to those documents, have any of the lot lines actually changed with this most recent submission?
No.
Compared to the November 16, 2016, plan on board?
No.
Have there been any changes with respect to the revision submitted to the board?
No.
Certain changes happened, correct?
Yes.
Did you focus on those solely as it relates to the subdivision?
If we could for a second, if we have a couple extra copies, not, not obviously dotted up for the 90, 100 people that are here, but maybe if you pass the one, Mr. Gazarowski has one. I know it's kind of hard for 90 people to share a copy or two, but...
So, there were certain changes, but there were, correct?
Yes, there've been five changes made to the subdivision plan. First, I'll refer to the changes in the lot designations, changes in lot designations better conform with municipal tax map as requested in section H2 on page 61 of Mr. Keyd's February 7, 2017 review letter. Mr. Keyd's most recent review letter dated July 3 indicates that further revisions to the block and lot designations may be required. This is also in section H2 on pages 60 to 61 of the July 3 letter. The applicant agrees to make whatever revisions to the lot and lot designations that potentially requires condition of approval. Second, there have been some revisions to the locations of the proposed water and sewer utility easements. Retail 5 was truncated, and, and as a result, we'll see on A, on A3, we have the utility easements within the site have been modified to accommodate the revision to the retail area.
Excuse me, is it A4 or A4?
A3. So, we had A2 and A3. Again, A2 is sheet three of four of the subdivision, and A3 is sheet four of four. So, third, we revised the zoning table that matches the site plan design. So, the zoning table, this is not an exhibit, but this is the actual sheet one of four of the subdivision submission, and the zoning table matches the site plan. So, we revised the zoning table as requested on pages 81 of Mr. Chavon's February 8, 2017 review letter. Mr. Chavon's most recent review letter dated June 30 indicates that further revisions to the zoning table are required. This is on page eight of 34 in section 1B4 of the June 30 letter. We'll certainly agree to make those changes as a condition of approval. Fourth, we added the proposed residential basin, construction, access, and maintenance easement to the proposed residential development, lot 851, 53 of 2, and that is shown on A3. And fifth, we modified the geometry of the public access easement at the Woodland Drive job handle, which is also on A3. A portion of an easement was created to access for the D O T to access their equipment.
He's looking at the planner's letter, the engineering letter, the body part of the board's perspective.
Yes.
Which basin are you referring to?
Which easement, oh, basin number seven. It's going on to basin number seven.
Basin number seven is the one on the residential lot. The space you referred to in regards to prevent D O T jurisdiction.
Wasn't a basin, but it's an easement for the purpose of accessing the signalized intersection equipment.
So, there was certain carryover comments in the planning and engineering letter, comment about that just currently?
Yes, there was some carryovers. Predominantly, most of them were simply carryovers from earlier reviews and stating that prior comments have been addressed, where the comments can be addressed as a condition of approval, and we take no exceptions to those comments.
Before we leave the subdivision matters, can we go back to A3? And the area that shows up lining green, that lot there is going to, effectively, that's where Basset Furniture is on the floor?
Yeah, we have yet to dive into the details on that, but I'm having a correction.
You're going to do that, you're going to go through these different, I mean, it seems to me you're going to the engineers in court.
No, not yet.
Not yet?
Big people.
Just keep that on the list of things we talked about.
Yes.
Do you think the staff members, certain issues, is that correct? Mark, do you need to speak to them?
Yes. Yes, the first concerns, including properties, are third quarters in the subdivision title block. From the subdivision title block of both of these exhibits, both Mr. Keyd and Mr. Chavon noted that the owner of the Basset Furniture lot, lot 871, lot 3, plans to convey a strip of land to NJ D O T for additional right of way along Route 35. This is raised in section H1A B and C on pages 59 to 60 of Mr. Keyd's July 3, 2017 letter. As Mr. Chavon notes in section 1A I2 on pages 5 and 6 of the June 30th letter, the owner of lot 871, lot 3, will convey frontage along Route 35 to NJ D O T, subject to NJ D O T general property dedication process. Dedication of property to NJ D O T is not required according to board approval. It is subject to NJ D O T jurisdiction, not the jurisdiction of the municipal planning board. This is not part of the subdivision application, we'll make that clear, of a municipal planning board, and it's not part of the subdivision application, and the applicant in this case is not asking the board to approve any subdivision of this lot. The same section of Mr. Keyd's letter also makes reference to lot 870, lots 1 and 3, which is the, known as the community appliance lot, and lot 870, lot 2, Walt's Stupchuk lot. There is no subdivision proposed for these lots either. They're not part of this application.
And the Basset Furniture dedication request, you know, in the letters, can you please address that issue from board level?
Yes. So, we anticipate the township will vacate a portion of the existing Kings Lane, I'll refer to exhibit A3. We anticipate the township will vacate a portion of Kings Lane, that will be real on. Village 35 will remove the pavement in that area and plant grass except for the entrance drive. Assuming the township does vacate the old right of way, then the dedicated right of way would revert to be joint owners. That means one half, that means one half of this right of way would revert to Mountain Hill, and the other half would revert to Basset Furniture.
Excuse me, who will be taking care of actually the cost of, or taking that out, ripping that part of the road out?
That would be at the cost of the applicant.
Yeah, okay. I know, sorry. You, in this portion, assuming there's other portions that are going to be rededicated to their own, but joined with other existing businesses? You've mentioned one, correct? You just mentioned the one half of it is going to be dedicated to Mountain Hill's property, and the other half is going to the business on the other side that will be Kings Lane.
Well, that's assuming the town vacates the right of way in that process.
Okay, and have you, and is there agreement with the business that they will assume that property?
There's agreement with Basset Furniture to show...
And is there any other place within this application of the same type of, where additional property would have to be vacated and were, because I'm looking at the, this, I believe that's A2 over there?
This is A3 on the left.
A3, I'm sorry. So, so the green, that is, that's the hand that you're talking about?
This sliver here is the half and half, this right of way.
And that's going to Basset Furniture?
Half, half would revert to Basset Furniture, the other half, if vacated, but township has the other half.
So, is there any other examples like that elsewhere on the property?
Not with respect to the township's...
Well, if we look at other businesses, if other businesses are going to enter...
No, there aren't. Okay, so, in addition, rather than dedicating the land between the old right of way and the new right of way to the township, Village 35 has agreed to convey its portion, assuming the town vacates, its portion to the owner of Basset Furniture lot, along with utilities which may be required. This applicant does not, and support to note, does not propose to dedicate this land to the township.
I mean, I'm sorry. What, can you reference basically the colors, the cross-examining, you're plugging down these...
Yeah, so this, this light purple is actually, in the deep, as it currently exists, the deep takes the property, Mount Hill property to the center line of the existing lot. And so, that would be basically a right of way that then gets vacated, and half of that would go to Basset Furniture, and the other half would go to Mount Hill. So, we're talking about that light purple sliver.
Would the green area remain as a green area, but literally, or can Basset actually build a parking lot in that area? You're conveying that green area to Basset, am I correct?
Ultimately, that, that is...
So, they would have the right to put a parking lot in there if they wish?
Question?
No.
See, I think you have to go back. Did you, I think, Carl, I could, Mr. Fidemont didn't get a chance to answer that question on the wire. So, the area is showing a green, and I think it also includes it, there's underlying green under that brown, right?
Yes, yes.
Who, who has got owned this after the proposal? Who's got owned that green?
That would be owned by Mount Hill.
That's their, that's their proposal, I mean. That's what I underestimated to be, I thought there was a note on the plan. Bill?
So, when the, assuming the right of way is vacant, and the land is divided in half, Basset gets this half, we get that half, then the next step, our property to Basset.
So, then Mount Hill is correcting it to Basset.
Yeah.
So, that's the green area, also, if there's green, you can't see it, but it's under the brown.
The green is under the brown, the brown is an access easement.
Why would they, the Basset, why would they need one over their own property?
This, this plan reflects, does not reflect the ultimate, again, we're waiting, we need town to make a decision on the right of way. Once that decision for vacate is done, then all the rest falls into place. Once that decision for vacated is done, then all the rest falls into place.
I just wanted to ask the end of the study area, the green portion needs to be vacated by March.
Please state to the microphone.
It's, the plan is identified as Lot 825202, proposed Lot 1.
Right, that, who is to say that that would go to Bassett or that remains at Mountain Hill?
Ultimately, it would go, there's a sequence, right? It would go to Mount Hill, and then transfer to Bassett.
It would go to Bassett.
Would Bassett have the right of way to actually, where you have that brown area, to build a markway or road into their?
The city, yes. Then we have to come up with a board approval on that.
Yeah, we realize that. I don't wanna jump ahead. Your work question is about that hill grid. I think I understand that, of course, just if I have to write this up, I need to be able to understand it. Let's talk about the light purple. So the light purple, the missed portion of Kings Lane, when the road gets, when the road gets vacated, half of it goes to Bassett, Bassett and White. Half of it then converts back to Mount Hill.
Yes.
A moment ago, I thought someone said that the deed already runs to the center line of Kings Lane. So is there actually a reversion back? Because of the public use of that road?
Yes.
But the deed itself runs to the center line?
Yes.
And then as you continue, to whatever direction it would be, I guess easterly on Kings Lane. Whatever, as you continue easterly on Kings Lane, all that purple area, then why would the purple area, as you go to the east, why is that identified in purple? What, doesn't Kings Lane remain the same?
King, so we're tied back into Kings Lane and transitionally back into existing Kings Lane. So that portion, that's the light purple with the lines through it, that would be, again, again, the deed runs to the center line, that would, that would get, go to the township.
Sorry, I understand, okay. If, if there are any other questions, I think I can explain it. I understand at this point, if the board asks questions, you, Mr. Finnick, or Cala Castro, or me just asked, I think I got it.
Across from Bassett Furniture?
Yes. That's. That's, that's getting eliminated as part of this proposal.
Is that what, I mean, I'm assuming this is on this?
No, we're showing basically.
Do you have other issues on the other related to subdivision, is that correct, Mr. Finnick?
Yes. So Ms. Shavon requests testimony clarifying what will happen to the portion of existing NJDOT right of way along a portion of Woodland Drive that will be relocated. In terms of future ownership of that land, that is up to the NJDOT. When Carl Pankey, our traffic engineer, testifies, he'll further address that question as to how NJDOT may address ownership of the old right of way.
Just point out to the public and the board where we're talking about?
Yes, this is the old right of way.
Great, thank you.
So in response to Ms. Shavon's question, Page 7, Comment 1A43, as to whether the portion that will no longer be used will be vegetated, the answer is yes, it will be vegetated. The applicant proposes to remove the pavement from the unused portion of the right of way, plant grass except for the entrance drive, which is an access of this location. So it'd be grass, pavement removed, and grass will be planted. Finally, Section 1AM 8A of Ms. Shavon's June 30, 2017 review letter concerns disturbance of steep slopes and whether there is a need for a waiver of Section 540636D of the township's ordinance, and that's really a site plan issue, and I'll address that as part of my testimony on the site plan.
Was nothing being transferred or conveyed to Wells Fargo?
No, Exhibit A2 shows the Wells Fargo lot, and nothing is being conveyed to the Wells Fargo lot.
Is that all you have on subdivision issues, Mr. Finnick? So everyone else you'd like to add?
I just wanna point out for the board that she, Sheet 82, the one to go right. There was a light purple lot up there. The relocation of Kings Highway East results in that lot, and they propose that that lot and light purple be dedicated as township for future right of way. That lot also contains, in their site plan, it contains a detention base. So any approval by the board is gonna have to be conditioned upon the township accepting that lot and accepting that basin, even though they're proposing that they're going to maintain it, but still, we can't, I don't think the county board can speak to the governing body as to whether or not that's acceptable. So that basin and that dedication to the town are submitted to the committee, as is any of the vacationed roads that we just talked about, the purple areas on Kings Lane.
Okay, turn to the site plan. What is the date of the site plan, how does the public, is it more, sorry?
Procedurally, how does that happen? So what will happen is that if this was approved, the subdivision plot would be presumably going to be filed. They could file it and offer it in dedication, there has to be a formal action by resolution of the governing body accepting that dedication or not. Or not? Or not? Could be more of a developer's agreement, but what I'm saying is that that's a decision that has to be made by the governing body. Or you could, getting to the very end, you turn it down by four.
Yes.
Giving a square for the accident. The applicant would be scrambling to put a basin someplace else. We. I would think as a practical matter, roadway dedication of itself is a normal customary, ordinary thing, you know, rearranging where roads are, I've never seen a situation where town didn't, didn't agree something along those. The question that I have, or something to question, is, is the town wanting detention basin on this property? If we can't hear you.
The other question also would be, needs of the detention basin?
Well, I think, when the question came up in February, and I asked that, and they said that they were going to maintain it. So.
Yes.
It's not that they're handing it to the town and saying they're not gonna do anything with it, they're gonna have to maintain it. So, but again, whether that's acceptable to the committee, that's down the road. However, the applicant, I would try to make some preliminary inquiry to make sure that that's gonna be okay, because you wouldn't wanna have, you wouldn't wanna have to go back here and move the basin or your lot. But, I mean, that's not typical, that developers face it on municipal property, even though there may be an underlying agreement. It's fairly typical with the DOT, I'll tell you that. Yes.
We cannot see the doors because of the.
The wooden block?
Yeah. Piece of furniture behind this one, can that be seen?
Yeah.
We cannot see it.
We're done with the, we're done with the subdivision at this point?
Maybe not.
Maybe not, okay, keep the subdivision up, please.
Got a copy of.
Please use the microphone, I'm so sorry, keep saying this. On the opposite side of the, of the existing Kings Lane here, with the Bassett Furniture, that purple line, and I knew you had both the cross line, vertical lines going through that where it would be, the, it would maintain as Mount Hill property. There is a, looks like almost a 70-foot park out here, where Kings Lane is. My question is directly across the screen, is obviously the Bassett Furniture, which has two entrances and exits, is that, does that line up with the current real estate name?
So, no, that's simply how the deed was, for the existing property existed. Goes to the center line, comes back to the edge of the right of way, comes back out to the center line. It's, it's, has nothing to do with anything on the other side of the street.
Okay, and does the, does the proposed new access, public access road, is that past the Bassett Furniture?
Which proposed access road?
The, the one that would split the two properties to the.
Oh, we call it, yeah, the interconnect road? So the question is, does that, is that past the Bassett?
Correct.
Furniture?
Okay, the reason I'm asking you is because I asked originally about the first residence on Kings Lane, and I understand you own that property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's another one, almost across, directly across, looks like a paper street almost, direct across, is that on my Mount Hill's lot?
Everything on.
Because that is past the Bassett Furniture, that's what, I'm trying to, if there's nothing on, on this plane that shows you where Bassett starts, stops?
If I can, if I can, I'll, I'll bring up the survey. This is the ALPA survey that's been submitted.
And that's part of the submitted sets, or not going to separate from more, it just identified as.
Actually, I can, I can bring up the final major subdivision plot sheet two of four. And you have read any of your tactics already, but I have to copy here, board mounted. And so your question is whether the interconnect is past, is past what, a home?
Yes.
On the opposite side, so I do see a structure on the opposite side. And then I see another structure just past that as well. I don't know what it are.
I believe that, that's a commercial on the, on the.
And, and if I may, I have another exhibit that may further clarify that, and I can introduce that exhibit to provide some further clarification. So Mount Hill has control, or property of homes on that side of the bank. Questions on the second?
Let's introduce the site plan, the right of way.
Let's turn around and have an exhibit. Remembering on the landscape plan. It's mounted to the left of the board members, to the right of the audience.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna mark the small sizes as the proper exhibit number. Just for reference, I can have them up there, just put a location on. We've mounted one as well, but it's a whole lot easier for the board to score these than just to score the big mountain. Just retain them, mark on there, this would be A4. And just keep them, they're all okay, so we're on. We'll keep the small ones in the board files.
Exhibit A4 is titled The Shops at Middletown, dated May 2017. And that is a landscape rendering of the commercial tract.
Survey sheets are signed as required, Mr. Finnick? The actual survey?
Yes, the survey, the ALPA survey. Last time we were here, there was one survey sheet that was not signed. Both sheets are signed by Joseph Ramallo.
We have here this evening if there are any questions, Mr. Chan?
Yes.
Are there any changes to the survey?
No, there are no other changes other than that, it's signed.
Okay, back to the site plan. Let's address, please, what has not changed, simple revisions, submissions, and what?
Okay, in the submission package, Sheet 64, oh, Sheet 64. I have a copy here, board mounted, this titled Site Plan Revisions Overlay, and dated June 6, 2017. Again, it's part of the submission package that we have, so it's not a central exhibit. But the board mounted, just for purposes of providing some of an overview as to the changes from the last time we were here. So, so the major change is the proposal to include 130,000 square foot, riding grocery.
Hold on, Mr. Chan. Again, I ask the audience, I know you think you're talking to a stage whisperer, but it's just carrying all over the place to get a quick couple of assists, so.
Keep guessing.
Please stop.
Stop saying wagons.
Go ahead, Joe.
The jug handle on Kings Highway East, has there been any change between the site plan previously submitted and revised plan?
No, there was no change.
Stormwater Basin 4, is there any change to that structure?
No, no change.
What about the Wells Fargo Parkin Lot and the access to the Wells Fargo site? Has there been any change with the submission?
No, no change.
The entrance to the shopping center from Kings Highway East, has there been any change?
No change.
Stormwater Basin 1B?
1B, no, no change.
Basin 1?
No change.
What about Basin 7?
Basin 7 is located up here on the south, southeast corner of the site in the opposite of the interconnect, no change.
Is there any change in Basin number 5?
Located near Kings Lane, no change.
The jug handle at Woodland Drive, did you address that? Are there any changes there?
No change.
The access easement?
The access easement. The appliance of this access easement, there is.
Is there any change there?
No change.
Bassett Furniture access easement, is there any change there?
That's the access road shown there, no change.
There are obviously certain changes to the plan, correct?
Yes, there are.
Can you take us through, starting with the obvious, please?
Sure. So referring again to the Sheet 64, 64 Site Plan Revisions Overlay, which is part of the second, we proceed. The revisions on site plan generally show, the overlay that here, in red, you can see, the majority of changes are in the southern end of the site, and the changes in revision to the high out. So the, the southern end of the site, the southern portion of the shopping center. So, the southern end of the site, southern portion of the shopping center, King Retail's five, six, seven, and eight. Retail five, which extended out here, has been reduced in overall area from 199,572 square feet. This is retail five, and this end was cut off. It's reduced to 151,955 square feet. The overall building area of the center has been reduced from 338,875 to 332,591 square feet. Retail five, as the nation has been trumpeted, five, six, and seven, basically rotated ninety degrees across the wagons footprint.
You keep referring to that, as in this five, six, seven, it's six and seven.
Oh, retail five, I'm sorry, six, this was six, seven, and eight had been.
Never five.
Never five, I'm sorry, five is.
Five was.
Access to the site has remained the same around the entire site, except for the interconnect road. So, along the interconnect road, because retail five was trumpeted to accommodate the parking field, we moved the entrance drive to the north by approximately 220 feet. We extended the proposed sidewalk along the entire length of the interconnect on both sides. We added lighting along the interconnect. Where we added the sidewalk. We added trees and plantings now. The trees and plantings that we added were along the interconnect by the wetlands up here. And if I can refer perhaps more succinctly, to see the representation on exhibit A4. And A4 shows the trees along the, along the wetlands border, along the interconnect. Retail one parking was shifted. Retail one parking, there was a slight modification to allow for a five-foot, a five-foot landscape there around the refuse area. Retail one truck loading was shifted from this side to this side. So, it was moved about forty feet to the north. Retail Theater Building number four, Theater Building number four, was shifted further away from the real line of Kings Highway. Shifted further to the south to allow for a fifty-foot buffer between the right of way and curb line.
Excuse me, Mr. Fidelman, the lady in the yellow here. This lady here in the yellow, you've gotta stop talking.
So, the theater was shifted further to the south to accommodate the fifty-foot buffer. As a result, this parking field was reduced, we lost eight spaces. And we provided eight spaces to the west of the theater. The theater parking field located to the west was revised to include curb islands. Instead of the striped island here by the ADA stalls, we provided a curb island with landscaping. And we also provide the necessary ADA access route from the stalls to the building. And that eliminated a waiver. And by the way, the theater shift, which we moved to get the fifty feet, that eliminated a variance. That was a variance for the fifty-foot buffer. Restaurant or retail building two, which is this building here, was revised to provide additional screening around the refuse to eliminate a design waiver. Restaurant retail building three was also revised to provide the screening around the refuse area, which eliminated a design waiver. Between buildings two and three, we had end caps that were doubled in size. And we lost some parking in this area, and we increased the landscaping on those islands. Retail five ADA parking stalls, which are located along retail five, these ADA parking stalls had all striped end caps. We modified those and curb islands in the landscaping, and yet implied the ADA requirements for access. Retail five truck loading areas were added to the rear of retail five, towards the southern end of retail five. And parking that was behind retail five, approximately thirty-four spaces, which spanned the back of retail five was eliminated. We eliminated, let's see, retail five parking field to the south, this area was revised. And we've incorporated a pedestrian-friendly plaza area in this portion, which our architects will provide some more detail on in future testimony. We also eliminated restaurants nine and ten. At sites, you don't see them on exhibit A4, but if you refer back to the overlay plan, you can see the two restaurants that were here, nine and ten. They've been eliminated to accommodate the overall retail change. Restaurant seven, which, this was formerly on the plans as restaurant or building eleven, so we've reduced the amount of buildings. And now we have restaurant seven that we refer to it. The parking and loading areas were reconfigured to eliminate the fifty-foot setback requirement. And so that eliminated the variance. And also we eliminated the modified parking to eliminate the refuse design waiver and five-foot screening is now provided around that. We added a sidewalk along the shopping center drive, which is along the shopping center drive. We added sidewalk for connectivity to retail five and the plaza area. We added trees from the interconnect drive road and to Route 35. So, this interconnect, the interconnect drive down to Route 35, this section here, now I'll refer back to the, to exhibit A4. And you can see the trees, tree line access road that's now provided. And again, that eliminated the design waiver for thirty-foot trees at thirty-foot on center. We added trees along the shops drive from Kings Lane to Woodland Drive. So, from Kings Lane to Woodland Drive, we've added all these trees along that stretch. And we've added trees along Route 35 frontage, along Route 35 frontage. We added all these trees, thirty feet on center, on either side of the entrance or 35. That's generally the revisions to the site plan.
Any quick question?
Yes.
You were saying that parking has changed for building five. Can you explain that a little bit more in that the rear building?
Parking's changed for retail five.
Not the parking, I'm sorry, the trucks for delivery, so that has changed?
For retail five, so you'll see we have truck loading areas behind retail five.
Okay, is that gonna be more private road, or does it look like for me on this, I can't see very clearly, or is rocks tripling it?
Not a private road, it's back of store, back of house.
I'm just looking for access, the term is tight with trucks there, it's very tight.
Oh, I have, in your, in your submission, if you refer to the truck circulation plans, I'll get into that in more detail. But we have all the truck circulation templates overlay and show the truck access for those particular truck outs.
Excuse me, the freshwater area, which is behind, behind building five, I notice all of them. Right, right near, I notice all of them, those are all garbage disposal units that are set in the fresh, in the freshwater area. See also, those are all garbage, is that really a smart thing to do? Because that is a, that is a wetland area to put those garbage disposal units in that area.
So, so those.
We have about seven of them.
Yeah, so those, those are concrete pads with curb islands around them. So, in terms of concern for, and they're fenced in, probably closed in terms of fencing. You can see here, we've got them on exhibit A4, we showed them here as well. But this is curb all around, along with fencing around them. So, in terms of having an impact to the wetlands, we're protecting them with the curb and the.
Garbage, well, under the wetlands, and then it disappears in the wetlands. Curb does not protect. Fence.
Wind blowing trash is.
Lock we pick up, slide these throw it in stuff, et cetera.
There obviously needs to be a maintenance protocol that keeps that in check.
How high is the level around each one, brought to the table, right? Where each dumpster is.
You have a six-foot-high chain link fence with privacy slots.
Between the dumpster and the wetlands.
Yes.
While we're there, when we're talking about loading, et cetera, the reference of the wagons for retail six. Where is the, where do they deliver it, proceed?
So, for retail six, there's the appendage out the back, and they have noting on both sides.
The main crossover between building five and wagons, where I can, it's in your park on up there. How, and I see where the sidewalk is, approximately how long is that? That seems to be one of the longest stretches, if somebody's going from wagons to building five.
Shall, shall I refer to exhibit A4 for this stretch?
Okay, yeah, right there.
Yes, so that, that's a landscaped walkway.
Wide walkway?
A wide walkway, yes. Provide the connectivity from the wagons, retail six to retail five. And that goes in eventually with the plaza go from retail five.
Do you need any warning lights or anything on that one walkway? I'm just, again, I'm not sure how much, how much traffic will be generated on that road going to wagons and to the other part of the shopping center. I just worry that's gonna be a main, main walkway. I know you're gonna have signage, it's just something you should look into. Something on a warning light, something, people are gonna be crossing here and.
We do have at every, at the crossings, we have the signs that we fit for the drive aisles. Stop, walk on the best reserved walkways.
We have two walkways, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's the.
Question for you, you mentioned in your testimony, a number of eliminations of design waivers. Can you aggregate that and let us know in terms of design waivers that have been eliminated from the previous plan? And/or designed, new design waivers that the plan is generating? And/or any variance really, would you mind with that, please?
I, I will do that, I'll add for the next testimony, on the summary of exactly what you're asking for, for instance.
Okay, in anticipation of that, again, as I'm asking you, since you noted the design waivers that were eliminated, are there any design waivers that should be pointed out tonight? That you need as new waivers, and/or any variance requirements? And again, on this testimony included, the elimination of design waivers as a comparison to the previous plan.
Again, I'd rather have the, the variance in that.
But that brings up a question.
Well, it's, it's a big problem.
I'm not asking you to total them up, what he's asking is that, what design waivers have been added, have been added?
Have been added?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the.
There's a sign waiver.
As a result, as a result, it's a sign variance as a result of the wagons.
Got, got, so essentially, all the design waivers that you noted that were eliminated, correct? There's a note, there's no new design waivers required as part of the modified plan?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, and similarly, the only, the only variance that you're requesting is from the sign, right, your sign order?
Yes.
Microphone.
If we could know, if you're gonna do this a different time, but, I mean, there's a June thirteenth, there's a sample of June 13, 2017 document that was in the submission package, of listed variances and listed design variance. And I think what Mr. Fidelman is saying, he can help with that.
Yes.
That's the plan. So, no reason to go through tonight, if there's some changes to it.
And give him the time.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't asking for it, and I understand that, I understand that the afternoon will do that in a matter of course regardless. I was just asking to highlight some of those items, since you brought it into your testimony regarding the elimination of design waivers.
Fair enough, yes.
Thank you.
That's all we have on the record, Mr. Chandler.
Let me just, for this evening, we have to, there has to be some sort of process if you decide. If Mr. Fidelman is coming back for additional testimony, it's really dead up to the board, how are you gonna handle cross-examination of Mr. Fidelman? Or any of them? What we're gonna do is basically, as they come up, then that testimony, there'll be some cross-examination, or are we gonna wait till next day? Because if he's got more to talk about, then you're gonna wind up with two, three, however many nights, that there might be testimony, and then questioning by the public and by Mr. Zabrowski, they have to respond as to that testimony. You hear, you hear he's coming back, so I guess the question tonight is, you asked questions, you allowed a lot of questions about Mr. Fidelman's testimony, and I, will you aggregate it, and when you sit on on his direct, you guys turn it over to the board?
We would hope you would permit it this evening, just for efficiency sake. And then, if he has new testimony, then the cross would be on that new testimony, not going back. That's typically what I see, and it's, every board is different. But we would invite the cross this evening, and, and members of the public. We'd like to be efficient with our time, as a board, of course, but respectfully, we'd like to get it done.
Well, I, I tend to agree, simply because he was tough. For whether he's a board member questioning, and/or assured the public, and Mr. Zabrowski. If we don't do cross now, we go. I, I think we're in agreement, yes.
Okay, can we put about addressing our updated letters on some of the plan provisions? on some of the plan provisions? I know I had comments, I'm sure. Can you just find comments in her letter? Got some provisions.
I assume that was going to be Day 2 of your testimony. You're going to, you will. At the next meeting, you're going to address both the competing and same as last.
Yes.
I just have a long question before we go to that. Do you want to leave parking?
Do what?
Do you leave parking? I'm sorry, I'm not. What, are you proposing any designated leave parking? Because obviously, it's not fine read down number 5, read down number 6. So is there any dedicated read down?
No, we have not, that day.
Thank you.
Even for a store the size of Weyman's? If not designated, it's only for, like in the back? Wherever. I mean, it's usually a awkward decision, but...
We'll provide testimony on that.
Weymans will have a revised, Weymans will have a sit-visit in parking for a bit. And we'll present testimony regarding that issue from Weymans.
The only thing I'd like to make is, because it's been a while since we looked at this. How do I access either your clients? If I'm a customer of theirs? Am I accessing it from 35?
Yes. Well, in the term, you can access it from 35. You propose condition, you can access it from 35 or you can access it from the revised jug handle route.
And the same with, what is it, Wall Smith shop?
Wall Smith shop, it's simply the 35 entrance exit that exists today will continue to be maintained.
Okay.
A question from the public. Bus stops. We have to work with the DOT on that. And I hope you pick areas which makes it easy for the customer or for the person to walk safely to the shopping center.
Yes, I know that we have at least two bus stops along 35.
And Ms. Paul Packy will provide further testimony or traffic answers. Would you please, I'm so sorry.
There you go.
We're looking at a huge development here. And typically, we would see restaurant number, whatever, come before as an individual application. We would catch details, things on garbage, sidewalks. Is there enough lighting for this sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera? We hear a few things pop up here just in the last 10 minutes or so. Are we going to have an opportunity to get into that detail? I'm thinking no. Or will the planning department continue to work with you just like DOT has to? There's certain things you have to do, bus stops, et cetera. Traffic signals, et cetera, goes on and on. So we don't have the opportunity here with a development this big to really get into a lot of details that are handicapped away, safety issues, et cetera. How, I guess this is a question for whoever wants to fill me in on this. How do we deal with those kind of dropped details? And how do they get checked along the way?
I think it's an excellent question because you don't have tenants for those places, right?
Exactly.
At the restaurant pad stores?
Not for all of them, no.
But she's right in that normally, if you just get Moe's or Hilltown Plaza or any other place.
As those details or tenants are made available and a detailed site plan is made available, then we'll have, we'll come before the board for significant complications to those restaurant pads.
If you go back to these, because the video patients can sometimes miss more pieces of it, then they'll get the attention and detail that they would introduce to you. But that's also work, it's up to your professional, and it's on the plan. And if there are, then the view letters of both sixty-eight in peace, they can pick up a lot of that stuff. And anytime the board wants to discuss it, you can, if you want them to walk you through and walk you through the buildings and show you the details, you can do that. But certainly, you have that right to do it and not, not let it get just, it looks like an overwhelming time for projects this big. But in terms of coming in with particular tenants, I think that the intent is that they're going to build it as shown on the site plan. And only if the tenant, one of the particular different locations, they're going to come back in on this end. But they're really going to try to force the tenants into this footprint. It's just a lot of work to come back in to make a building five feet bigger or move to parking space. That's a lot of process, a lot of expense.
I would like to add to the rest question that the organization doing that would be, we go through lots in my ledger. Because as Mr. Rosen mentioned, a lot of the comments about site managers are already there, and everything there. You know, so we, I mean, I would imagine that next week, the next meeting, would we want...
Next week?
Not next week, next meeting. Yeah. Next...
The case of the money.
The next meeting, we would address that, Mr. Rosen.
Yes.
This is your order, please. It was already a meeting in Denver. Mr. Fidamont testimony. He was not completed with his direct testimony. There was no cross-examination happen. So I just, because I have a little bit of concern if we slice up his testimony and then allow cross-examination just on that night. Because we already missed one. And I'll leave it up to the board. Decide any which way you want. But just remember that it's going to, in my opinion, you're going to have like endless cross-examination. But every time he gets up again, it's going to be very hard just to say, oh, no, that was last time, not this time. So I'll leave it up to the board how you want to handle it. The applicant has made a proposal that the, that it be night by night? That's the way the board wants it perceived that time. Just recognize, we have, we already had one night where we didn't do...
I think he'll be here almost every night. These are one of our star witnesses. He designed it. So he'll be back. So I'd like to get on to this really indicated. And if something else comes up, we want the information to flow freely and be responsive to the board. So if you use the half an hour, I think that'd be productive as well.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I mean, it's going to be very hard for, you know, while I don't normally disagree with Mr. Warren, it's going to be very hard for the public. Obviously, many of them are not to be experts in these fields. It's going to be very difficult for them to wait month to month to come back and cross-examine or ask questions of a witness. So while it's fresh, I totally understand Mr. Warren's point in that Mr. Fidamont has already, but it's even fresher on the public's mind. And they need to be able to properly voice their opinions about this product. But I feel like that they should be able to do that on the night of the testimony is made.
Let me pose one more hypothetical. You want us up at 9:00 tonight? What about if there are 15 more people who want to ask questions of Mr. Fidamont tonight? Do we start the next night with those 15 people asking questions of Mr. Fidamont before he begins to say something new? So you're back in that same box again. Every night he's here, you're basically opening them up to cross-examination on every night. So if, you know, if 10 people get up, clock runs out, 9:00, you want to move on, what do we do with the people who didn't get up? When do they get back? When does that one start to go? As a procedure for questions, I'm just pointing out, you know, a hypothetical, something that I think is reasonably anticipated. And I'll leave it to, I mean, I know this is what the applicant wants to do, this is what the board wants to do. Okay, to try and keep order and get that going. But just recognize, there are people here who are going to say, I had something I want to ask him about.
Well, when we're short of, if that carries tonight, then when I told you the public portion of Mr. Fidamont's testimony, we're carrying it to the fore. And yes, people will have to go back simply if they don't want to ask any question. But he's still, I think we all recognize he's still there on the floor. He will take us a question.
My prediction is that it becomes unlimited cross-examination of Mr. Fidamont every time he sees another issue. That's what I'm suggesting is going to happen.
But also, the board chair, we can control that. I feel we should have it. The public should be able to talk tonight because you forget, they will forget whether it's one week, two week, and some cannot come back. We should really get it on record tonight. I think we've done it in the past. And it's a large, it's a large application.
But I think it's also worth mentioning for the public that this is for questions of Mr. Fidamont, not general opinions about the overall project.
Right, so I agree with you. All right, if he's done, that he's the board. You got any additional questions right now? Before I open it up and close? All right. Mr. Zabrowski?
I want the board to choose.
No, we're not one. You're on.
I have to say, the public person, I'm trying to fly off. They also say, I make my colleagues.
Go ahead.
I agree with Mr. Warren, one of the reasons. When I first appeared last month, I said that there were continual changes based upon comments made by your predecessors. Quite frankly, if we come back, many of those are addressed and a little short in the cross-examination. That's a comment I have to do with the board. And we all acknowledge that the plans, and I'm not trying to fault Mr. Fidamont, are not yet complete because they haven't addressed all the issues that we needed to provide. In terms of what model, whoever they be, they clean those things up, they'll lend you less cross-examination.
Why don't you do your cross and might eliminate some of the questions the public has, too.
Look, wherever you find it, I think by the public, clearly, I guess, better questions are determined if you're the ones who were there and they extend. It all started, right?
Well, it's not easy to control you than necessarily the public. So I was giving you attorney courtesy. Passage of...
First of all, you want to work.
So if you're all right, we're sitting down for a little while. I'll let the public get a little speak.
My colleague is helping to comment upon my news. I sit around.
Good, good. All right, with that said, and we'll open, we'll open the public. Keep in mind that Mr. Wilkes said, this is not for comments. This is questions on anything Mr. Fidamont testified to receive. All right, anyone from above?
For your two speak, I need you to please come up forward. State your name and story.
Yeah, we need a microphone. Sit with it. Yes, ma'am, right here. You were the first. Is that going to make it over there?
Speak your name.
Speak in. Is that on?
No.
I just have one basic question. Everyone is talking about the details of the various stores and restaurants and movie theater. Is it a done deal that there's going to be a huge Weymans?
Is that a question? That's a question for Mr. Fidamont.
We are proposing a Weymans.
That means that it's proposed, but it's not cited on?
The board has made no decisions whatsoever. Not necessary.
This is the application process.
Your application.
But, but, the board could not deny them having Weymans there. That's the question. If that's their, if that, say the board approved the site.
Right, that's my question.
Who their tenant is within a few bounds is up to them, not us.
But the source is up to you.
Of the store itself?
Yes.
To a certain extent, yes.
What extent?
There's not, there's no ordinance that says, in effect, they can't have 130,000 square feet.
Okay, so that would...
Theoretically, but the outranges. They could build a, how many square feet you got here?
One one.
330,000 square foot.
One one.
One place. Theoretically. No, we wouldn't. Just to take something off the table. But go ahead. Again, questions for Mr. Fidamont.
The other question I have is about the green area that you're proposing to want in Skyway East, which is a historical road.
Yes.
50 feet isn't much. Is there any chance that that could be more?
We propose the 50 feet. 50 feet is what's required as we proceed through the process. And when you look at the corridor and you see the amount of green, and we do have exhibits that I'll present at subsequent meetings that'll show an overlay. And I think further testimony, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of testimony that's yet to come. I think it might be more appropriate to wait for that specific question. You'll see what we have to do.
Next.
Yes, I am, yes, I am. C-A-S-L-L, you know. And I'm going to keep Skyway East. And I'd like to know what's going to happen to all 35. How is that, how are all those stores and all that traffic? How's that going to happen? It's like putting a bathtub into an ocean.
You're always, wait, now with the comment, you're not asking him a direct question about his testimony. Go ahead.
I want to know about the traffic.
Which they haven't. They want to have a traffic expert here to testify on the circulation and the effects on the roads and everything else. And that's not what he testifies to today.
That testimony is coming, Mr. Fidamont.
That's going to be a big issue.
Absolutely.
Very big issue.
Absolutely.
How are we going to get that?
You'll have to come back into the comment as opposed to a direct question on his testimony.
I'd like to know what's going to happen to the values of our homes.
He didn't testify.
The usual issues.
And you have, and the only, the only way we can, the one way I can proceed here is to keep it based on what was the testimony. Otherwise, it starts into a free world. So you've got to save questions and comments like that for later and when it's appropriate.
You will have a chance later. You will actually...
You can grill a traffic expert or not attend on that part.
For the end, you will actually bring your own comments out and you can actually say what you want to say.
Well, can you tell me what's going to happen on King's Highway East? Does anybody know?
Well, again, there's going to be other witnesses presented by the applicant. There's going to be other witnesses presented by the applicant who's going to speak for that. And at that time, you can ask that witness right now.
Because these are all very important questions.
We don't disagree with you, ma'am. I'm going to have to ask you to sit down because you're not addressing Mr. Fidamont. So you can go back later with your questions about whatever the testimony for that night is. That's good. That's terrific.
Good evening. Judy Musa. M-U-S-A. Question, Mr. Fidamont. How many variances and waivers have been requested? Because you brought up a couple of them that have changed. How many have you applied for for this project?
As I mentioned, I'll provide detailed testimony on that. We have filed waivers and a list of waivers and variances. And those are on file with the officials.
the catchers. You can look at the county records, but I'm not prepared to discuss those tonight, but I will and keep the testimony.
Okay. And you talked about this wagons, that's about 130,000 square feet. How many employees do those wagons anticipate they'll have? Do you know that?
Again, that's a question for another witness that will be coming to testify.
Okay. And how many parking spaces are you setting aside for employees?
Again, that'll be testimony from another witness. Again, I did provide some limited testimony tonight, so I apologize if I have to repeat myself, but I just wanted to streamline the process here. So if you can focus on what you asked, what I testified to tonight specifically, if you have an answer.
Okay, so you also talked about green space and the number of trees. Can you tell me how many trees will be removed and how many are going to be replaced with new trees? Old growth versus new growth trees? Is that any of your concern?
That's in the documents and in the review letters. The professionals here have done a very thorough job of asking those questions and responses back and forth, so all that is in the documents on file with the catchers.
Okay, and there will be a DEP, I'm sure, approval process because of the wetlands that you have to know about?
Yes, we actually have the DEP approval of G D P six for the wetlands.
Okay, and they're allowing you to put garbage dumpsters basically right next to the wetlands?
We have a agreement from the DEP based on that.
Green space, it's wetland area, right?
We have the DEP approval. We're outside of their restricted areas with certain observation areas.
Okay, thank you.
The, back in 2015, there was a settlement out of appeal. Right. Out of, back in 2015, there was actually that settlement that generated the general development plan, and that does state that 45,000 square foot is the largest tenant that is permitted. So are you asking for a waiver or a limited amendment to the G D P or both?
It's a leave from that condition to the resolution, and there was no settlement.
Well, there was an appeal.
There was a settlement, there was a proof of why.
Wasn't that part of the settlement?
No.
Of the appeal, no?
There was no appeal. There's been no litigation on...
This application?
On this application. On this property, there's a long history of it, but on this application, there is no litigation.
Okay, so G D P came out of, just a new agreement between everyone?
Not agreement, an application.
An application, so that's the current zone. And it says 45,000 square foot is the largest tenant permitted. So when you're asking for 130,000 square feet, is it a waiver? Is it an amendment to the G D P? What is that?
An amendment to the G D P.
So you have to vote on an amendment?
Relief from the condition in the G D P.
Relief from a condition. The board will have to vote on a relief from a condition. Is that correct?
That's correct.
To go from 45,000 to 130,000. 188% increase.
So...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So the board will have to vote on that.
Yes.
Okay, and I want to put on the record that that is 188% increase. They're not asking for like 5% increase, 10% increase. 188. I'm going to stay waiting for another question. What's the burden of proof? Does the applicant have to have like a burden of proof to ask for that or for you to vote on it? What's the criteria? Or is it just a yes or no vote?
In simple, they can ask for anything they want.
Right, but you do have to vote on it. So is there any criteria that they, burden of proof they have to show? Or they just ask and you vote?
That's a very good question. And the answer to that is, the burden of proof is, there's no ordinance, no restriction, there's no...
Restriction what?
It's not a particular building.
But it says it in the G D P, that's what we need to...
That's not an ordinance.
It's a guide.
G D P is not an ordinance.
It is, it is a...
Resolution.
Resolution.
So what's the burden of proof? They have to come before the board. Mr. Polakaspar lays it out in his memorandum that I referred to a while ago, and certainly we do that, but he went through the available law. I agree with his conclusion that the burden of proof is basically, what weight does the board have to say no?
Check the community.
People don't want...
We're deviating from the original. We ask, asking questions of, you're making comments now, but we're not...
You said it's a definite question. 45,000, how do you go from 45,000 to 130,000?
But that's not, that's not for this comment.
Well, on the site plan, that's why. It is on the site plan, that's what I'm asking. Which witness is it then?
It's a legal, it's a legal.
So you won't have a witness that can answer that then, is what you're saying?
No, it's a legal.
Okay, so, but the board will have to vote on, just tell me, are you running on that again? Is it a waiver now? Is it a site plan?
Well, Mr. Polakaspar referred to it as relief of the condition. Do you want to call it an amendment to the G D P? It's a sale.
It's an addition.
Okay. So the board, tell me this, okay, well, enough now. The board has to vote on that, a relief from the condition.
The application.
The application.
I want, I want, L O C K E. I want to ask, gentlemen, how many acres does the business plan cover?
Approximately 50 acres, 52 acres.
And how many parking spaces are there?
Approximately, exactly 1,786.
3,300, that would be...
1,786 parking spaces.
1,786 for 50 acres. Now, does that meet the township plan for parking spaces per acre in business?
Yes.
I ask it.
Yeah.
It does. Yes, it's 1,700 and odd number of how many potential cars would be in for that parking lot at that time.
I have a question.
Speaking down, if you guys...
And across the walking path, what kind of safety, um, regulations would you have then?
For...
For like the walking path?
What do you say, walking paths?
You said there was a walking path.
There's sidewalks on both sides of the interconnected road, so...
Right, so, is that the back one?
Yeah, so, I don't want to shine this in your eyes.
My concern is that if there's a movie theater, would people be back there littering? Will there be any additional, like lighting? Will there be a blue light if somebody's, you know, getting hurt or doing drugs or, it just seems like a very large corridor in our town that will turn into a path that kids will go from the movie theater and hang out at.
We'll provide more testimony about the lighting, but the lighting is designed in accordance with the town roadway, not lighting requirements.
Any more, what, any more safety? Um, my concern, Washington is a dark, fast road, wide movie theater.
Would it testify to lighting or anything else here?
Okay.
So, yes, the last of those questions, and you can ask, congratulations.
I'm Ph. L. M. Can you assert that you have a G D P permit for all the necessary construction, is that right?
We have a G D six permit for the wetlands.
And as part of your application, where did that occur?
It occurred last year sometime, I believe.
We have...
Summer last year.
And was the State Historic Preservation Office involved as part of your application? Did you notify them of the impact that would have on the historic district in Milltown?
We have, we have another party that had done a, the application with Shipperton has made all those contacts, so I'm not, I don't have the information with me, but all that has been filed with the catcher, but it's unfiled with the catcher.
Okay, so is it possible that that D E P permit could in fact be revoked because you have to follow the historic preservation requirements from the state of New Jersey?
Yeah.
Many times for applications that have to go through D E P, if they do come through a historical district, there is a part of D E P that overlooks Shipperton-type applications. So to further this comment, it is, if it goes through a historical district, D E P has folks that work in that department that would look at an application like that.
And I guess the question is, if it impacts the historic district, they say, well, we're not actually constructing within the historic district, but it will have an impact upon the envy of the historic district, does the D E P historic office then get involved? Has it been considered in connection with this application? Because I think it's just of significance that we're dealing with a federal landmark property. We have the approvals, it's only the state, it's only the...
No, wait a second. She was up here first. I'll get you next. Come on.
Julie Evans, E V A N S. Some of these exhibits that each of them have very small labels and things that were passed around, the scale is a little spooky. How would we look at these to formulate questions and to study them? Are they available to us?
They're available on the catcher.
Catcher.
Right, Deborah, you're up.
She's snapping high levels of it.
Yes, sir, come on up. He was, I had him...
That's right.
Perfect, go ahead.
My name is John McGarish, M C G A R R Y. I have a question. When you put together the application for the project, were you aware of the $45,000 limitation, a $45,000 square foot limitation?
We're aware of the conditions and the resolution of the G D P, yes.
In a project of this nature, is it normal that you would try to increase the square footage by 188% that was stated earlier?
It's not this way. It's not this way. If you're the engineer, he's not there. He's not the owner.
I have a question for the board then. It must, someone must have seen value to set the limitation of 45,000 square foot in this area. And I heard the comment that was made that indicated that what basis would the board have to deny the increase of 188% in square footage? So my question is, what's the value, what's the reason for having any regulations? If in fact, that's going to be the attitude that, what basis do we have to reject it?
There is no regulation limit, the size.
So why have regulations?
Conditions.
We have regulations for lots of reasons. In this case, for this, ladies and gentlemen, please quiet down there. In this case here, we're talking about, you'd like a regulation that says, you can only have this, this size of a sole or a foot. There is no regulation requirement that the township has that limits the size of this, of a sole.
That wasn't his question.
That was, did I answer your question?
Well, I don't have...
Well, I'm satisfied. Well, thank you. Yes, sir.
Bill Cashning, spelled K A S T N I N G. I'm not a resident of the town. Do you need an address or not? Yeah. Okay, four top lists that drive, home down, but I'm also representing Monos Conservation Foundation, whom many of you know. I'm the executive director, and they are located at 625 Milltown Link Brook Road. So my concern tonight is the site plan only, and one question I have is, are there excessive parking spots being proposed on the site given the square footage of the commercial? There's a minimum requirement in the, in this town, and we meet or exceed that requirement? I understand. I read the documentation. I believe you do exceed it. Is that not correct? Yes, we do. And by what number of parking spots? I didn't provide testimony on that tonight, but... But I am looking at our building table on the site plan. And what does that mean? Do you calculate the difference, everybody in here?
1386 minus 1475.
Your 300 is...
Okay, and what is the area of parking space? Nine by 18. And if you took all those parking spaces, what area would they be? The additional parking spaces that aren't necessary to accommodate this application, how many acres would that equal? We have to run the calculations. I don't have the... It's easily done if you have a calculator. Okay, well, I would ask that you, how can I pose this as a question? I think the additional, the excessive parking spaces are not required per the application, and I think they should be used for open spaces inside. I'm sorry, I'm commenting. I have difficulty formulating a question. Why would you not consider the excessive parking spaces being considered for open space? Because tenant requirements vary from tenant to tenant, and with respect to the overall shopping center, there's a four and a half spaces per thousand square foot as a general number that's being used as the suggested minimum parking, and tenants, such as a restaurant, require more parking than that. Other tenants require more parking in a 4.5 ratio, so there are marketing reasons why that would not be appropriate. So does each tenant that's proposed come before the planning board to get approval for those additional parking spaces for their particular use? No, the project is being reviewed as a shopping center in its entirety. You didn't answer my question.
That's, that's a different requirement than if you came in with your property or school.
It's like a zoning officer consideration. Is that a zoning officer consideration to approve an application for, for pad sites etc.?
Well, when a building permit is issued, they have to go get a zoning permit before that building permit is issued.
That's not a planning board issue.
I didn't think I said that. Your asked question, does the board review each individual tenant that comes in?
No.
That goes before construction permit is issued, it goes to the zoning officer to wish a zoning permit. If this is an approved plan and they are building and occupying a space on an approved site plan, it goes from the zoning officer presumably checks off the box. On site plan, it goes on to the building board.
Thank you. I have one additional question. Did you consider subsurface containment storage for stormwater in this application as opposed to the Seminole basins? Absolutely, yes. Why did you not choose to do so and have those basins become pure open space? We have underground, underground infiltration basins do exist, and they're proposed on the site and...
Yeah, excuse me, the environment, I'm part of the environment.
Yeah, excuse me, the environment, I'm part of the environmental commission. I do have quite a few underground retention basins, which we go for.
Well, you have a lot more area, a parking area that could contain more underground. I think you could, the question I guess I'm posing is that there, is there more room to have under, storm under subsurface containment stations, so not as many detention basins have to exist on the site?
Anything would be engineered, yes.
Will you consider doing that?
No.
Why?
We provided a reasonable degree of open space with respect to underground infiltration. We have provided an ample amount of, we've taken the roof runoffs.
What's your definition of reasonable open space?
You satisfy the criteria of the elements. And we have infiltrated the roofs where possible. And this has been done as a collaborative effort with respect to tenant layouts, parking, open space. It all was considered, and the best solution that we have is what, the best solution that we have is what's, what's being presented to the Board tonight.
How do you define best?
Lisa, I'm going to agree with you.
That's obvious, but I wanted it on the record, thank you very much.
So this answer question, I, so I get to ask a question in eight weeks from now, sir?
Whatever it is, yeah.
Is that your next scheduled meeting for this application?
Uh, we're going to carry to the September...
So for the record, I have those two weeks for eight weeks.
Yes, you do. Ladies and gentlemen, we're looking outside. On the record here, a court reporter is trying to get this all down, please. Go ahead.
The court carries September 3rd, did I hear?
Everybody, please be quiet. This is on the record, if this goes to court, we are registered. The judicial date's not gonna be corrected. Court reporter can't take it down. Everybody, please, just let us finish up this application of the Board's intent. The question is, when is this hearing continued? The next, the next scheduled meeting will be September... Right, we're not going to that... September 13th?
6:30?
6:30.
Without further notice?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, five minutes break, so...